...to order. I will ask everyone to please stand for the presentation of the colors by the Acadiana Veterans Honor Guard, along with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
(inaudible) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, with Memorial Day approaching and our junior ROTCs were unavailable tonight, we're very thankful for the Acadiana Veterans Honor Guard for being here tonight. All right, Dr. Aguilar, you have opening comments?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Members of the Board, it's graduation time. Congratulations to the seniors of ECA. They will be the first 2017 graduating class from the Lafayette Parish School System. Their ceremony is tomorrow, May 11th, at 1:00 PM at the Cajun Dome Convention Center. These incredibly lucky students will also graduate at 6:00 PM from SLCC. David Thibodeau will be next on Friday, May 19th, 6:30 at the Cajun Dome Convention Center. Then on Saturday, May 20th, we will begin our day at the Cajun Dome at 8:30 AM with Nardside High, followed by Acadiana High at 11:00, Karen Crow High at 1:30, Como High at 4:00 PM. Lafayette High will close out the night starting at 6:30 PM. And our last adult education graduation for LPSS will be held on Thursday, May 25th at the ULL Angel Hall. Members of the Board, public, please come out to the Opening Gala for the Students' Art Expo, which is Friday, May 12th, at the Acadiana Center for the Arts. Please join us at 7:00 PM for presentations and performances. Saturday, May 13th will be the Students' Art Expo Downtown. The event brings at noon, begins at noon and concludes at 8:30 PM. Performances will occur at various locations, including Vermillion Street Stage and Monca Theater at ACA. This is the eighth year that students in pre-K through 12th grade can share their talent with the public. Thank you to this year's major sponsors, McDonald's and Acadiana Center for the Arts. Also on Saturday, May 13th, from 9:00 AM until noon, is Nardside High School's Open House. The community is invited to visit and see what Nardside has to offer LPS high school students. Seats are still available for the Law Academy, Broadcast Academy, and the expansion of the Health Academy. There will be school tours, free food, and entertainment. If you're interested in becoming a Nardside Viking, this goes out to students, this is an opportunity to gain more information. Members of the Board, First Lady Donna Edwards will be visiting LJ Alamon on Tuesday, May 16th, from 1:45 until 2:15 PM to see art in action. Board members are invited to attend. The Lafayette Parish School Board Recognition Meeting that was scheduled for May 3rd has been rescheduled for Wednesday of next week, May 17th. It will be at the David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy, beginning at 5:30. And the end of the year is quickly approaching. Just a reminder to parents that all schools close at the end of the day on Thursday, May 25th. Report cards will be sent via mail on Friday, May 26th. There is no mail delivery on Monday, May 29th due to Memorial Day observance, and Central Office will be closed as well. Parents who are aware that their child will need to attend summer school should contact their school's counselor early to obtain summer school information. Summer school for grades 5 through 8 will be at LJ Alamon, and 9th through 12th grade at Nardside, beginning on June 1st and conclude on June 30th. And I am excited to inform you that Alyssa Broussard has been named by the College Board as a Spring Board Teacher of Distinction. This award honors teaching excellence and identifies the best in the profession. Spring Board is excited to recognize teachers who exemplify the core principles of Spring Board's success indicators, have inspired a love for learning in their students, and have distinguished themselves as leaders in their schools. Alyssa is the second teacher in Lafayette Parish to have received this honor, and Lafayette Parish is currently the only school district using Spring Board to have more than one teacher of distinction. Ms. Broussard is currently a teacher at LJ Alamon Middle School. Congratulations to Ms. Broussard. And that concludes my opening remarks.
Thank you. We'll move on to our information and presentations. Our first presentation is to highlight the Chinese immersion program. I'm going to ask all of my fellow board members to please, there's a row saved for us in the audience so that we can see what the students are showing us.
Third row on this side. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the Principal of Plantation Elementary School, Anne Herman.
I would like to welcome all of you. Actually, we had planned for our students to introduce myself and their teachers. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to our students. I want to thank you for your attention, and these children have worked hard every day, and their parents, teachers, have all been very supportive, excellent teachers for these students. So I'm going to let, turn this mic over to them.
(inaudible)
Hello.
Hello.
What they are going to read has no Chinese, no sound. It's just a camera, it's no sound. And every Julie show there.
Go first and then point out to them and they're going to say.
(inaudible).
Okay, thank you.
Sure, we're meant to.
Sure does.
It snaps.
Snap.
Um, can you get, do we take this?
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
Hello.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, we're meant to.
Sure does.
It snaps.
Snap.
Um, can you get, do we take this?
(inaudible).
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 It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
It's a little bit different from our school.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
(inaudible).
You know, you just gotta say.
Hello, my name's Isabella, and her name's Cadence, and this is Emily and Julia.
We're in the second grade, we're in the second grade.
We are plantation students, first grade and second grade Chinese immersion.
This is our principal, Ms. Herman.
This is our assistant principal, Ms. Singleton.
This is our first grade, Ms. Lee.
This is our second grade, Ms. Zhang.
And second grade, Ms. Cheng.
First grade, Ms. Li.
This is our second grade, Ms. Zhang.
And second grade, Ms. Cheng.
Right now, we are going to say the seven habits in Chinese.
(inaudible).
Good habit, one,积极主动. Good habit, two,以终为始. Good habit, three,要事第一. Good habit, four,双赢思维. Good habit, five,执笔结底. Good habit, six,同和同效. Good habit, seven,不断更新,不断更新.
第一，听
第二，听
第三，听
第四，听
第五，听
第六，听
第七，听
第八，听
第九，听
第十，听
Right now, we are going to read an article.
开始
爸爸说爸爸说
Is there anything y'all would like to ask us for us to say in Chinese?
天
天
McDonald's
(laughing)
二年级请下
坐，坐下来
第二年级下去
一年级上来，二年级下去
Right now, we are going to demonstrate buying and selling things.
我要买太贵了可以小一点 好，给你
谢谢，再见
再见
欢迎再来
你好
请问你要买什么
太贵了我没有钱
3块钱
好吧 给你3块钱 谢谢
不客气
再见
再见
欢迎再来
一二三谢谢
再见
四年级
再见
Thank you, students. We appreciate that very much. Thank you, everybody. Ms. Samick, while they're picking up, can you continue with the next item? ULL and LPSS collaboration to support Westside?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'm going to ask Kay Victorian to come to the microphone to introduce our guest tonight.
I don't know if we can follow that, but I think we have some good information for you this evening. I'm Kay Victorian, the Library Science Specialist for the district, and this evening, we just wanted to present to you a wonderful collaboration that happened in light of our disastrous flood in August of 2016. Out of that very tragic event, we've developed a collaboration between the Library Media Center for, Carol and Richard Media Center and ULL with Dr. Roxanne Bork, who is a professor of Curriculum and Instruction, through her, through Carrie Calotto, who is a teacher at, of kindergarten at Westside Elementary, and also the counselor at Westside, Monica Briscoe, and then all of the students that were under Professor, Dr. Bork. With their inspiration, they came to us, and we were able to create materials and do, they were able to work with those teachers to do wonderful things. But I wasn't involved, but on the back end as support, so I'm going to let Dr. Bork tell you more about it. And we're going to start a slideshow.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to come and tell our story. Greetings from Curriculum and Instruction. I am a teacher of teachers, pre-service teachers, early childhood, specifically pre-K to 3rd. I was Lafayette Parish teacher, and I was hired by UL, and now I, I have the, it is an honor to be able to do what I do, which is prepare young people to come into the teaching field. What I have found is that Lafayette Parish has embraced us, and we are looking now at the state requirements to change clinical experiences to a more richer and deeper understanding of what, what we can offer from theory to practice. With that said, in times of crisis, we reach out. And so, as, as we entered into the flood situation, I had a secret Facebook page of former students, which, this is one of my former students, Ms. Carrie Calotto, I'd like to introduce you to her. She teaches kindergarten at Westside Elementary. And so I posed the question, I said, "I have two sections of curriculum and instruction, curriculum class for early childhood, how can we help?" So Carrie reached back out to me, and this is how the whole collaboration started. She said, "Help, we need materials of instruction, we've lost everything." So, first day of class, will my students stand up and please come and join us? I have a small sampling of my students. I posed the question, I showed Carrie on her interview, and I said, "This is what happened to Westside Elementary, how can we help?" And then I said, "Would you be willing to help?" And this is how it all began. And so I, I reached back out to Carrie, and I said, "I have, I have close to 40 students that can come in and help you throughout the year, are you interested?" And she said, "Yes."
So, reaching out to Dr. Bork, she was a teacher that I remember, a professor, and she had a wonderful teaching mechanisms, and I knew that through her, she could reach her students to want to start to help us. And with their creative minds and their time that they had, they were able to create all of these curriculum-aligned centers for us. And they would come in and not only show the children, but work with the children. They went over and beyond, both in math and ELA, and they also did a career day fair for us. And the girls dressed up, and they branched out to careers that our students were never exposed to. And you can see the children in these pictures playing in these centers, and they still to this day play in those centers. And these UL students got one-on-one experience, they created something that they knew would help us and help the students. And it wasn't baseline, adding and subtracting, organizing numbers, it's higher-order thinking. And the kids still ask when they're coming back, and we have to let them know that maybe next year they'll see them, but it has been a wonderful experience, so.
Thanks, Carrie. With that said, we have found some emerging trends, that it is important for us to build community with Lafayette Parish. It is important for us to improve on clinical experience and practicum experience. I want to commend the teachers at Westside Elementary, would you please raise your hand? And Ms. Thomas is here, too? And Ms. Thomas for saying yes, because what it did is it allowed us, and not to forget, Lafayette Parish Media Center, we had, we had class there. Ms. Mona and Ms. Stacy actually embraced us, and we created those, all of these young ladies here are some, some of the over 40 students who went into the media center, used the materials of instruction there, learned how to use the media center with open arms. So this whole effort is times 4, 5, 10 in manpower. I say, we bring an army of pre-teachers, and our in-service teachers embrace them. I commend those teachers because they worked with my newbies, and they guided them and modeled best practices. And I saw it, and I, I heard the reflections in class, I read the reflections from the assessments of what the students produced. And I think, I'm going to look at my girls right now, and I think it was probably one of the richest experiences that they'd had all year, and you're going to nod your head yes, right? But I want to thank everyone involved. I want you to consider maybe looking, Ms. Victorian and I, Kay, have, has discussed maybe a model to, to evolve out of this piece, because it was a year-long project, it started off being a helping hands type of thing, going in and looking at, at, through a different lens at, at teachers in crisis, and just embracing them with love and what they needed. And I think it, I think it was a beautiful experience all the way around, and it extended on to the end, and the children really enjoyed it. So we are very, very interested in improving our clinical practices and being more visible in Lafayette Parish. Call me, I'm at UL, call me if you have any ideas. I have the teaching, the pre-service teacher army, and I love to be able to prepare them for Lafayette Parish Schools. Thank you very much. Is there anything else that anyone would like to say? Did I go over my limit?
So, we thank you for hearing about this project, and just wanted you to know that they created the, all of, they used all the materials in the media center to create the items they use to teach the children. And so sometimes it, coming from a background as a principal, I know, Ms. Thomas, we always look for, you know, that extra helping hand, and I thought this was a great way to show that we are a community that supports learning, no matter what the circumstance. Thank you for your time.
Oh, I have one more thing to say. And we have, we're already planning for the future, right, Carrie?
For next year.
And teachers? And Ms. Thomas? Yes, we're looking forward to planning for next year. We're already, we've got it in the, in the, in the works.
Thank you. All right, the next information item is an update on the Como High Performing Arts Academy building.
Kyle Bordlon, Director of Planning and Facilities. I have with us tonight Mr. Charles Beasley with Architects Beasley-Moliere to give us a brief update on the Como High Performing Arts Academy building project. Good evening. The project design is progressing. We have completed the schematic design phase, just, we've met with the staff and with the administration to review that with them. We have turned over documents to the construction manager that was selected so that they can start with their schematic design estimate for the, as their first phase of services. We'll be publishing the schematic design documents this next week, and we can distribute them to you as, as needed, to show you what the progress is there. We have, the survey is underway right now, onsite, the surveyors have been there for the last week. We have ordered the geotechnical survey to be done for the foundation design. So everything is, is very early in the process and moving very rapidly right now. We plan to have the construction documents out in September, and hope to begin construction of the project in November, late in October or November, and right now, we're looking for a schedule to be able to complete the project in January of 2019. So, that's a very brief and succinct report of where we are and how we're progressing.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, the next item is a listing of bids approved to be advertised by Dr. Aguilar.
Members of the Board, effective January 2017, an administrative guideline set up the requirement for me to notify you of advertisement for various bids, so expect monthly to see this report showing bids that have been released by my office.
Thank you. We have the continuing learning units earned by board members.
Thank you. Members of the Board, I am required annually to publish in the Board minutes the number of continuing learning hours that you received during the previous year. I'm also required to issue a press release, that's going out tomorrow morning. At your seats, you have certificates from the LSBA indicating the number of hours that you have earned in 2016, just for information for the public. School Board members receive training hours in such things as improving failing schools, high school redesign, school law, ethics, public bid law, open meeting laws, minimum foundation program, and dropout prevention, and any number of additional professional service hours. So my congratulations to the board members for receipt of those training hours, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up are personnel changes.
Ms. Morris, the changes for the month of May are attached, if anybody has any questions.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'll read each item. The board members will pull those for discussion. 4.1, approval of revised policy JVC-E, public school choice. 4.2, career development funds. 4.3, dress code changes.
Pull that, please.
4.4, revised policy JCDAE, student use of electronic telecommunication.
Pull that one.
4.5, approval of bid award for dairy products. 4.6, approval of bid award for bread products. 4.7, approval of bid for frozen juice. 4.8, job description revision, food service cafeteria manager 3. 4.9, job description revision, food service area supervisor. 4.10, job description revision, food service meal benefits coordinator. 4.11, job description revision, food service cafeteria manager 2. 4.12, job description revision, food service cafeteria manager 1. 4.13, approval of quotes for Lafayette High repair circular concrete drive. 4.14, approval of quotes for school gym floor, finishing screen, and recoats. 4.15, approval of budget revision and capital improvements fund. 4.16, approval of quotes for Plantation Elementary concrete paving repairs. 4.17, approval of bids for West Side Elementary temporary campus site improvements. 4.18, rejection of bids for Como High restroom renovations. 4.19, rejection of bids for South Side High School welding and carpentry equipment and supplies. 4.20, approval of bids for South Side High School music, theater, and art furniture. 4.21, approval of bids for South Side High School gym tables, chairs, and athletic storage furniture and equipment. 4.22, approval of environmental consulting services consultant. 4.23, sales tax collection report for March 2017. 4.24, utility servitude City of Youngsville. 4.25, approval of installation of irrigation pipeline by Lessee, Section 16 Ridge. 4.26, utility servitude agreement City of Lafayette STEM Academy. 4.27, resolution 0517-9009, preliminary approval of issuance of bonds.
Pull that, please.
4.28, summary of grant funding and activity. 4.29, budget to actual reports, April 2017. 4.30, approved bid award paperback books 67-17. 4.31, eliminate adult education positions. 4.32, reduction in force.
Pull that.
4.33, approval of minutes. All right.
Madam President, I move that we approve all items, not pull.
All right. Second by Mr. Angel. All right, for any of those items that were not pulled, is there any public comment or questions on those? Any questions or comments on those items by the board? Right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote on those items.
Eight for, none against.
All right, the first item that was pulled is 4.3 by Mr. Centany.
Madam President, I move that the board approve changes to the LPSS 2017-2018 Student Parent Handbook.
All right, can I get a second? Mr. Angel? All right, I know that we have a speaker on this item. Sir, could you state your name and what school you're from, and then speak into the microphone for us, please?
My name is Daniel Shafisa Day, and I represent David Tibido STEM Magnet Academy. Good evening, Lafayette Parish School Board members and audience. My name is Daniel Shafisa Day, and I represent David Tibido STEM Magnet Academy. Uniforms have been around for a while, but they aren't really benefiting us. They are causing more problems instead of solving the ones they were intended for. So here are some reasons why you all should choose free dress. Uniforms have been fueling commercial interests. America spends about $1 billion on uniforms, and only few schools get a percentage back. Adding on to that, each American spends about $250 each year, which makes the poor even poorer. Uniforms have also been used to make everyone look the same, but this can easily be replaced with IDs. And IDs don't cause as many problems as uniforms. For example, the Southwest Journal of Criminal Justice fast assaults increased by 14 incidents yearly when uniforms were said as a dress code. Also, uniforms are uncomfortable and cause problems like fidgeting and less positivity. And one of the most controversial issues about uniforms is they violate the First Amendment. Uniforms violate freedom of expression. So are we still the land of the free? But the most common issue is uniforms are generally disliked. Rasmussen Reports has found out 47% of parents are against the uniform, 41% are for it, and 12% are undecided. Any questions? Any questions from the board members?
Yes.
Mr. Centany?
I would, I would point out that we're not actually debating whether or not to do away with uniforms, although it's a reasonable point. You made some very fine points in your, in your statement. Do you have any opinions on allowing or disallowing different hair colors?
Certain hair colors, they don't really, well, I don't really think that out of the ordinary colors, like ones that you dye your hair with, like spray or something like that, should be allowed. But if it's like naturally dyed or something like that, then it's fine.
I personally want to thank you for coming and telling us what you think about this. We always value everyone's opinion, especially our students. And I know it's not the easiest thing in the world to get up in the microphone and on television in front of the entire parish. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And if you are not already interested in running for office at your school or in the future, it's something you might want to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other members of the public comment on this item? All right, members of the board? Mr. Hidalgo?
The, correct me if I'm wrong here, Dr. Aguilar, but the dress code, uniform portion of this item was vetted by the discipline committee. However, it appears that the hair color portion of this item was only vetted by a student committee. Is that correct?
No, sir. The dress code portion and the hair color were vetted at two meetings, but Dr. Aguilar had suggested he wanted input from student committee to talk about the hair color issue. It was, when that committee met and voted at the March meeting, it was a split decision. It was somewhat in favor of allowing high schools to have really any color of hair. And at that point, Dr. Aguilar just wanted a little input from our, our students.
And the reasons that half of them did not want to allow any hair color, what are, give me some of the reasons?
Probably the big reason was it's the feeling that school is a student's job, and there's a standard of appearance at a person's job. And the other big argument would be that it causes a distraction when somebody shows up in pink hair or pink and blue hair. The other side of the point was it's probably more of a distraction to the older generation of teachers and administrators. The kids themselves, it's not really a big deal to the kids. And the feeling from the student committee was they walk in the first day in pink hair, and everybody's like, "Wow, look at that." But by the end of the day and the next day, it's really not, nobody, the way the world is today, nobody really blinks after they walk in and sit down. But again, the people that, the principals and parents and staff that were against it, primarily because it's distraction, and that a student's school day is his job, and there's a standard of appearance at your job.
Thank you. Just a question, I'm going to support this because I support the work that's been done behind it. But I do want to ask, this is a professional organization with 4,200 to 5,000 employees, depending on how you want to look at it, whether it's subs or full-time. How many of our new employees walk on the job the first day with pink hair?
Been doing it about 25 years, and I haven't seen that. Probably the thing that changed most over the years is you see some of the gentlemen wearing earrings, longer hair. You know, there's been a movement away from shirt and ties in the classroom. The ladies are probably not wearing hose and dress as much as, you know, 20 years ago. No, teachers generally do not show up with outrageous extremes in hair. And in all honesty, principals would probably call them in and have a chat in terms of, of your dress attire, because we do have a policy that addresses that.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. Last thing is, I was included on the, I was appointed to the discipline committee early on, and my name has found its way off of that list. And I would like my name to find its way back on that list.
Absolutely. Dr. Aguilar mentioned that to me. You will be back on the list.
Thank you very much.
And any, any other community board member, you are welcome to show up, but you'll certainly be personally invited.
Well, it wasn't a public meeting, so I wasn't notified of it. No, thank you.
All right, any other comments from the board?
Madam, Madam President, can, can anybody vote, no matter how much hair they have or don't have?
I think those with less hair, their vote counts less. Mr., Mr. Lachey.
The one thing I will say, which will reflect my vote on this, is the high school that is in my district is actually against the change, as is the principal and the students that were involved. They believe it to be a distraction. They, they do believe it, it is your workplace. And certain rules and regulations, though at that age you may not approve of them. I work for a major corporation. We have a dress code. We have what facial hair we can and can't wear, and this comment's going to really get a laugh. I can't show up at work with pink hair, being I don't have any, but in more ways than one. And just to let you know, the school that I represent and the students who are on the committee have asked me to vote no and keep the policy as is. Thank you.
Mr. Bruce Horn?
I try to understand the younger group and their dress code. And I think every group of youngsters have their own era. And I know, we had a conversation earlier, when I was in high school, we all wore platform shoes. No one was under six feet tall. That was a fact. We all had extremely long hair, which didn't agree with my parents. And I don't agree with the different color hairstyle and all the earrings, but it's, it's their era. It's, it's, and I don't think when they become our age and that pink hair is gone, they're going to wish they had it. But, but still, that's, I, I think that's, that's, that's their era to explore whoever they are. And even though I don't agree with it, I certainly can respect it.
All right, any other comments from the board? All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Five for, three against. Four for, four against. Four for and four against.
All right, so what we may need to consider, because there were two parts to that, and we didn't even discuss the jeggings and leggings part of it. Yes, please, Mr. Centany?
Madam President, I move that the board approve changes to the LPSS 2017-2018 Student Parent Handbook, including pre-K to 12 students are prohibited from wearing jeggings or yoga pants as uniform bottoms.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions from the public on this motion? From the board? All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. Oh, Mr. Hidalgo, you had a comment?
Yeah. Four for, four against.
So that, that part of the motion?
Was the reason, the reason for that was because it didn't address?
Well, because the motion didn't separate them out the first time. It was combined, the two parts to the motion.
Okay, and they're not still combined?
Well, he just made the motion just to cover the first part, because I don't think there's any dispute about disallowing.
Clarify my motion.
Right, to disallow leggings or jeggings and yoga pants.
There will be no hair color change now.
Right.
Just to clarify. The hair color change is not included in your motion.
Right.
Got you. Thank you.
Well, this is the second motion.
Madam President?
Yes.
Do you expect the outcome to change with the motion as it sits?
I think, I could be wrong, but I think the first motion failed because we were focusing on the hair color allowance. I don't think we really addressed separately the jeggings or yoga pants. So this motion, I believe, Mr. Centany, is to address only the recommended changes to disallow jeggings and yoga pants as uniform bottoms. I don't know, I think we can. All right, we're not deciding the hair color again. That one's already done. But just to clarify, the second part.
I support no dress code, and I support removing the hair color limitations. So my vote was based upon the fact that this doesn't address changing the dress code completely. So, no, there can't be a limitation on whether this is addressed, because that's assuming what people voted on. So with that being said, if we can do number one first, fine, then we can address number two. That's what I'd like to vote on temporarily. Yeah.
All right, then can we recall or withdraw the form of vote so that we can separate this out into two motions? The board wants to withdraw it so we can separate them out to make our votes clear. Okay, all right. So the current motion on the floor is to change the dress code policy to disallow jeggings and yoga pants as uniform bottoms. It's been seconded by Mr. Lachey. All right. So any further comment from the board? All right, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on that motion. So you're going to make another motion to be specific for the hair color?
Seven for, one against.
All right, Mr. Centany?
Madam President, I move that the- Madam President, I move that the board approve changes to the LPSS 2017-2018 Student Parent Handbook, removing hair color limitations for high school students.
All right, can I get a second? Dr. Shassle? All right, any further comment on this particular motion that's particular to the hair color? All right, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Dr. Shassle. So read the motion carefully. So a yes vote means that the policy will be changed and hair color limitations will be removed. A no vote means there will be no change.
Four-four, four against.
All right, so the motion does not pass, so there will be no change to the dress code regarding removal of the hair color limitations. All right, the next item that was pulled was 4.4. Uh, Mr. Centani?
Madam President, I move that the board modify policy JCDAE, student use of electronic telecommunications device, and reflected in the 20s. Do I have to read the whole thing? Is that, or is that sufficient? No, I think that's sufficient. We have the modified one on, attached to the agenda.
Yeah. All right, we have a second to approve the recommendation.
A second.
All right. All right, any questions or comments from the public on this recommended policy change? All right, members of the board, Dr. Shassle?
I have a quick question. What was the discipline accordingly that was, uh, strike out? What, what was it before?
So in the past, uh, if a student failed to turn over their cellphone, primarily we're talking about cellphones, if they refused to turn over the cellphone, excuse me, student would be recommended for expulsion. They'd have a hearing. Typically at the hearing, the hearing officer would say,
Can have the phone.
Turn your phone up, turn the phone over for five days or thirty days, or you'd go to MOS prep. So, so technology's moving ahead so fast and connecting this to the world. We're trying to still have a consequence, but not have to be inventorying hundreds of phones throughout the school year.
Okay.
So with the new policy, if you're using, if a student's using their cellphone in class, the teacher collects the phone, the parent can pick it up that afternoon. We're not keeping it for five days, thirty days, an extended holiday.
Gotcha.
Parent can come and pick it up at that afternoon, but then this kid, the student, goes through the discipline step. So the first consequence would be after-school detention. The second consequence would be ISS. The third offense would be potentially suspension. If they don't learn their lesson, you could progress to multiple days of suspension. Now, if the student in the revised policy still refuses to turn over their cellphone, they'd be recommended for expulsion and kind of go through the same process. But, but this takes away principals having to catalog cellphones, returning them before an extended holiday. And we understand parents want to be connected to their kids, but we still, we don't want test security issues. We don't want kids taking videos of fights. We don't want them texting during class. And that way, we still have a consequence, but we don't, we, we reducing the confiscation aspect.
Okay. What, when it says disciplined accordingly previously, what, what was the discipline as far as for the refusal, refusal to relinquish?
Recommended expulsion.
Okay. So, so it's remaining the same?
No, sir. If, if the student, if you're, the student's using their cellphone in class, that Mrs. Smith says, give me your phone. The student turns the phone over.
Right.
The teacher will turn the phone into the office. Parent can come get it that afternoon.
No, I, no, I understand that. What I'm asking is, the, the, uh, one, two, three, four.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was a rec, if you didn't, if, if you turned it in, it was five days, thirty days, one year. I'm sorry.
I know, I know what they were. What I'm asking is, the fourth paragraph, um, the very first sentence, refusal, refusal to relinquish the cellphone, um, constitutes willful disobedience. The student shall be disciplined accordingly. So we're changing that, changing that to recommended expulsion. But if it was recommended expulsion, so nothing's changing.
Yes, sir. So I guess that's an error on my part. There shouldn't have been disciplined accordingly. It should have all, it was always recommended for expulsion.
Okay, that was my question.
I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay. And then, uh, on the second page, um, I wanted to ask the board's opinion and even staff's opinion. Uh, the, the first sentence, use or operation of an electronic telecommunications device shall mean the device is either visible. Now, if they have mesh book sacks and, I mean, it's always gonna be technically visible unless they have it in some strange pocket that maybe should or shouldn't exist. I, I do have a problem, and I know this is, this is, this has always been the case, but if it's visible, uh, for instance, in a kid's pocket, um, back pocket, in a side pocket in their, in their book sack, I, I, I never really agreed with it being visible. And even the notion of turned on has always bothered me, and I'm mainly speaking to the board as well. Um, there's been times where, where I've heard from parents that have said, well, listen, my kid had the phone on before school, forgot to turn the ringer off. Phone rings in class, they took his phone, they took her phone. There have been cases where principals and teachers have been in our school board meeting and we heard a phone going off, and, you know, you have full intentions to turn it off, but you just forgot. So I just don't agree with taking a kid's phone and that kid suffering, uh, in-school suspension, um, out-of-school suspension, or even getting his first or second, um, ding based upon the phone being on. Now, what I deem use of oper, use or operation of an electronic telecommunications device is actually using the phone. I mean, I just physically opened my phone up to make sure the ringer was off and it dinged in the middle of my school board meeting. Didn't mean it to, but that shouldn't be my first offense if Dr. Aguilar chooses to take my phone when I had full intentions of turning it off. So I would like to see some possible change to use or operation of that device, that it's actually, because in the mode of receiving and transmitting signals, it's always in the mode of using and transmitting signals. I'd like it to be if you're actually caught using your phone. If a phone goes off and it's in your book sack and you're learning, that shouldn't be bring your phone up. You know, hey, turn your phone off. They'll get, they'll get used to it. I mean, everybody should turn their phone off. If you agree or disagree, if anybody can just chime in, I'd like to hear anybody's thoughts.
Yeah, um, Dr. Shassle, I, I, I agree with you. However, I do want to throw out a couple of other side of the stories. So regarding being visible, I think the biggest thing for me is the risk of, the visibility is not just that someone sees it, like the teacher or the principal, however, but it being stolen. If it's visible, it's a lot easier to steal. Even simply grabbing it out of their back pocket when they're walking down the hall with the noise and everything going on. And we don't want to, I think, get into the business of who stole my phone and investigating that kind of stuff. And we can say that we're not at risk all we want, but they're gonna come to the office, they're gonna complain. The parents will come down to the office, they'll complain, and it'll go on and on. I, unfortunately, I believe that we have to be as firm on these rules as possible. If a phone is on and the volume is on and it's in a book sack and it's not really visible and it rings in the middle of class, that's a distraction. And I think the idea behind this is to prevent distraction. And there has to be, in my opinion, some serious consequences if you don't follow the rules. Their phones should be turned off and them not remembering to, I don't know, it's, it's not as good. I know when I'm in church on Sunday and I hear a phone ringing, I just think, man, what are these people thinking? Why? Because I choose to leave my phone, I don't bring it in with me. Now, that's my choice, but it's not a rule, but it's the idea about the distraction. So, um, I have to respectfully disagree because I think we have to be as firm as we can be on this policy.
Mr. Earl Lashley.
In respect to both of my board members who've just spoken, I, I can agree with both. Uh, I see points to both. Uh, my only question, uh, not to Dr. Shassle, but to his point, is how many times would we let little Johnny get away with not turning his phone off? I mean, would little Johnny learn after the first, second, third time? And then, you know, by midterm, if, you know, little Johnny, you're leaving your phone on because you're waiting for texts. Uh, I only, we only had one child to raise. We have one son who's now a college graduate. Uh, most of my rules and regulations went above and beyond what the school system said. Uh, when he was allowed to drive to school and take his cellphone, it stayed in his truck. I was not really concerned what the school was gonna do to him with the phone. I was concerned what mom and daddy were gonna do to him, and it stayed in his truck. And we never had, we never had any violations. And we weren't overly tough parents. We just had certain rules and regulations that, you know, you're gonna follow. That may be some of my military background. Um, but we, we made it clear and there was no gray area, and we never had a problem. I can see, I can, I can definitely see where you're coming from, Dr. Shassle. If, if the phone's on and you accidentally turn it off, I've done it in a board meeting. Uh, I don't know if you saw me, my highly technical phone I have. When you mentioned it, I double-checked mine to make sure it was off, because I didn't want mine going off. But, uh, on the other hand, I, I firmly agree with, with Mr. Hidalgo that there, there, there has to be a, a fine line, no gray area. And I, I think it's just part of following the rules and regulations. If we're not gonna allow cellphone use, then, there it is.
Mr. Bruce Horn.
I totally disagree with having phones on a school campus completely, because I don't think it's necessary. If there's an emergency, there's ways to get through the student. So, but modern technology allows you to, to keep up with times. And I think there should be some punishment the first day and changing this to confiscating the phone and allowing the parents to pick it up at the end of the school day, I think is, it's a little bit more lenient than expulsion or recommended for expulsion. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a much lighter penalty or policy than what it was. But it should, certainly should teach them a lesson of responsibility about having a phone on campus. And, uh, it, it, like I said, it's, I totally disagree with having it completed on campus, because most of them, it's, they have it for reasons other than what they need it for.
Ms. Morrison.
I just wanted to bring the fact, uh, to think about a classroom environment. As a teacher, it's very distracting. You may be in the middle of a lecture or you may be testing, and just imagine for a phone to go off, it distracts the students while they're testing. It distracts teaching, and it's, sometimes it may seem like a minor thing, the first offense, but it's major in a classroom environment, depending on what you're doing. So, um, just think of it that way. I think, um, it may be minor, just the first time, but that first time could really distract a student trying to pass a test. And it could be whether he pass or fail or graduate, you know, it could really be severe. So I think that, um, you know, this policy is going to teach our students to be responsible, to make sure you turn your phone off before you enter the classroom. Um, you know, as they grow, they have to follow rules and regulations. And, and this is what we're teaching them to do as they move forward as adults. Thank you.
Mr. Lashley.
Mr. Shassle, I'm gonna, Dr. Shassle, I'm gonna make you laugh. You know what distraction we had with phones when I was at Acadiana from seventy-five to seventy-nine? When they put the payphone outside and we could actually use a payphone instead of going to the office. Do you realize the students that were pulled into the office for hanging around the payphone? There's probably people watching TV that don't know what a payphone was, but it was a distraction, believe it or not.
Okay, Dr. Shassle.
I have to reluctantly, reluctantly agree, agree with you all. Uh, Jeremy's first point actually rings true. He actually just whispered in my ear, thirty kids are in a class and it continues to happen. I do have to agree with it. Uh, with this ever changing age, we need to learn how to incorporate it, but I can't argue with the arguments that have been brought up. Um, I do have a second and finally last, well, a third and last question. Um, the willful disobedience portion of the, of the discipline matrix. If a kid is somewhere, um, Cruz, for instance, kid's somewhere, they say, go in the gym. That kid refuses to go, willful disobedience. What's the, what's the consequence on the discipline matrix for that versus the, the willful disobedience of not turning over a phone? Because I'd like those to match up, if anything. Does anybody, does anybody know? Because if, if I, if I refuse to leave an area or I refuse to spit that gum out my mouth, that's still willful disobedience, whether it's a phone or a gum or, um, you know, whatever. I'd like that to match up. So if it's not recommended expulsion, I'd like, I'd like it to match that, because willful disobedience is the same thing, no matter what way you look at it. Does anybody happen to know off the top of their head?
I guess, um, the committee, in terms of keeping the recommended expulsion in there for refusing to turn it over, the feelings of the committee were, if you're just gonna, if I'm gonna be disciplined for willful disobedience and, and that's all, and I get to walk out of the class with my phone, they're not gonna turn the phone over. And the other aspect of that was if a kid videotapes a fight, videotapes a test.
Right.
And they refuse to turn the phone over, they get out of class and they're able to share that, and they're able to share that, that test material with somebody else because they refused to turn over the phone and all I'm gonna get is a willful disobedience, they wanted, they don't, they want something that the kids will respond to. And it was felt that recommended expulsion was the only thing that would get them to turn it over.
And after that, that's my last question. I just want to know what, what that actual willful disobedience.
He's waiting, he's chomping.
Mr. Frusier?
Chomping at the bit.
Yeah, if anybody. Because I mean, if, even if, even if a kid still is willful disobedient, whether the, the kid's not giving it up, they're not giving it up, so they're still gonna share that.
Willful disobedience for any other issue that would occur during the day would be, the first step would be assign in-school suspension, ISS one to three days, and that could be repeated a couple of times.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
There's more to the story, though.
All right. I'm gonna support this recommendation, but I have a lot of issues with the wording. I mean, we are intending to impose some pretty significant discipline on the students based on this policy, and there are, in my mind, several ambiguities. Um, so for instance, uh, willful disobed, willful disobedience based on something occurring during school hours. But what are those school hours? Is it when the last bell rings, or is it when the last student leaves after extracurricular activities? And that's a kind of a legal factor. So if a child has finished her volleyball practice and calls her parent, but football is still being practiced, is it during school hours and has she now violated this policy? I would say that the way this policy is written, she has. But the reason we allow students to bring phones to school is so they can call their parents after practice. So I think there's several ambiguities in this policy, including the point made that, uh, we mandate our students carry clear or mesh backpacks. And they, they're not gonna carry their phones in their pockets, so they're gonna be visible. So I think that the, the policy, the ambiguity really needs to be cleaned up and some definitions added, because we are intending to impose some pretty significant disciplinary measures. So I think that that's gonna create some problems. Um, and, you know, depending on who decides it's willful disobedience. So is that little girl calling her parents after volleyball being willfully disobedient because her school day is over, but the school day is not over for the entire school? So I'd like to ask staff to go ahead and clean up those kinds of issues.
So Ms. Morris, I mean, you bring up some good points. I think we need to clear, clarify the language so there's no confusion. We have a Tuesday board meeting next week. We can bring this item back to the, back to you next week.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Centani, would you withdraw your motion and we'll defer action on this?
Certainly.
Uh, the second agrees, Ms. Morrison? All right, then we will move on to the next item. Uh, the next item pulled was number twenty-seven. Mr. Centani?
Madam President, I move that the board approve Resolution 05-17-1909, providing for the incurring of debt and issuance of seventy-five million dollars of sales tax revenue bonds. Second.
Thank you. And Mr. Osborne, I know you made a trip to visit us, so if you'd like to come and explain to us what this is?
Thank you. I'm Jerry Osborne with Foley and Dell. And, uh, this resolution, uh, is a six- I'm Jerry Osborne with Foley and Dell, and this resolution is a successor to a prior resolution this school board adopted, Resolution 19...I mean, in 2015, make an application to the Bond Commission to issue $55 million of sales tax revenue bonds payable from the 1965 1% sales tax. Now appears that you may have legislation passed that will allow you to issue 40-year bonds from the sales tax, while previously you could only issue 25-year bonds. If you can issue 40-year bonds, and you are able to issue them to rural development like you did with one of your previous issues, you would have more capacity. You could retire more bonds from the same sales tax. So this would...this amends your previous application to the Bond Commission and prevents you to issue up to 75 million. It doesn't require you to issue that amount, but it just gives you authority to levy up to 75 million dollars of sales tax revenue bonds, and they would...could run as many as 40 years.
Mr. Osborne, I'm looking at the legislation you referred to. It is passed the Senate, is not yet scheduled before the House Ways and Means Committee. Adopting this resolution this evening, let's assume the legislation does not pass the House of Representatives. Does that preclude us from...do we subsequently have to come back and adopt another resolution to go back to 55 million?
Right. It'd be appropriate then to come back and amend it, you know, and you may want not amend it, you may want to just repeal it and go back to your old 55 million of 25-year bonds.
Also, my question was, should we simply wait on this one? Like, have we made applications to the Bond Commission under the old...like, are we going to reset the process, and let's say if we do nothing tonight and the legislation fails, then we just keep going the way we were going?
Yes, you can certainly do that. The Bond Commission has approved the 55 million, and it's in the bank. It's locked down.
Oh, okay.
This one, if you do it, will increase the approval to 75 million, and it will be not exceeding 40 years, but it can be less than 40 years, it can be less than 75 million.
Okay, all right. That was my question, was where are we in the process with the $55 million?
Right. You evidently just checked it. I understand it's in...it's in House Ways and Means. It's been all the way through the Senate.
Correct.
And it's in House Ways and Means, but it hasn't been heard yet in that committee.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other public comment? Members of the Board? Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Eight, four, none against.
All right, the last item pulled is 32. Mr. Centany?
Madam President, I move that the Board provide approval of a reduction in force to allow administrative staff to execute a RIF if it is not possible to place all employees adversely impacted by the budget.
All right, any comments from members of the public? Okay, members of the Board? Mr. Centany?
As we usually do this time of year, I'd like Ms. Thibodeau to give an explanation of what it means to declare a reduction in force.
Good evening, Board. My name is Suzanne Thibodeau, Assistant Director of Human Resources. We're just becoming prepared after the budget meeting. We're not sure what's going to come out of the budget meeting, and so since I would not be able to get back to you for another month, I want to be prepared and be able to go into a RIF if we cannot place every employee. Please be assured, we will do everything to place every employee. We will...we don't ever want to...for an employee to lose their job or be reduced. So we take it very seriously. We follow the policy exactly. We have measures in place to follow exactly what the policy tells us. There's criteria of what order would be reduced, but it's...if you have a class of people that you would like to reduce, we would go to the policy, and we'd go down the criteria and use that criteria to reduce that group of employees. If...okay, go ahead. If oftentimes, too, what happens is we may reduce someone, and then someone leaves, so it becomes a position open, we also have a recall provision in the policy. So we go back to that criteria and start calling people back. So we've done that before.
Is that policy GBNA? Is that the RIF policy?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. On. We recently passed a policy having to do with placement of displaced teachers and others that...the discussion was whether or not it was going to be heavily weighted on seniority or not, et cetera, et cetera. My question to you is, if all of this gets voted on successfully and is put into place, and for whatever reason there are, as you stated, classes of employees that are either the positions are...in a certain department are reduced, or the entire department is eliminated, and those are certified individuals with teaching certificates, what happens to the displaced list? Do those...because, for example, I hate to pick on the instructional strategists, but they're typically highly qualified, they're certified, and they are typically...have been in the system quite a while. So seniority is there, but we no longer use seniority for displaced teachers solely. So what would happen if, for example, that class of employees were eliminated, and now those people, those individuals, would, you know, try to go back in the classroom? However, we have a load of displaced teachers here already. How is that going to work out?
You put your employees in a bucket according to the certification. So say you have an instructional strategist that is certified in math, then we would look at the first thing, their evaluation, and then the next criteria...so the person with the highest evaluation would be placed first. But say, then you come, and there's people equal, the same evaluations, then the next criteria would go to a degree. So if they would have an advanced degree, then that person would be placed. So that's how we would do that.
And of course, they're all evaluated, but they're not necessarily all evaluated on the same scorecard, but they're all evaluated.
That is right, and so we would just have to come up with a fair way that...to determine whose evaluation is...would be a higher performer. Most of our teachers now, we've never displaced people, this instructional strategist, I don't believe that our teachers now pull today the list of all the teachers and their evaluations, so I could see who was on the bottom, who was the lower evaluation. So I'll know when I start placing, and I'll rank all of the employees that are displaced or could possibly be reduced according to their evaluation. And then, as I said, then they go to a degree, and then you would go to your years of experience. So...but if you have evaluations that are not the same, we would just have to come up with a fair mechanism to determine which evaluation would be...have more weight.
Thank you.
All right, any other Board comment or questions? And Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Eight, four, none against.
All right, thank you. That concludes our meeting, so I wish everybody a good night.